At six forty-five, I is myself, Council Reynolds, Council Tavoris. We have two items from the docket of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. I entertain a motion to transfer twenty thousand dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account one-one-two-one-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-three-zero-eight-nine-zero. Mayor, City Solicitor, the City Solicitor's June invoice has not been received. Therefore, in an abundance of caution, additional funds are being requested for the remainder of fiscal year twenty-four.
Second.
Which is an order. This is a, just to cover the June invoice for when it comes in, so that we don't have to come in and cover that later on. Any questions, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion passes. Next, from the docket of June fourth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to transfer four-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars from account one-one-one-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-three-two-zero-one-five. Assessor Staff Development to account one-one-four-one-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-five-eight-one-one-zero. Assessor Subscriptions.
Second.
Motion's in order, this is just a subscription, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Business for the Finance Committee, I move to adjourn at six forty-six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned at six forty-six.
The IT and Infrastructure Committee is canceled for this evening, as is the Special Committee on Rules and Procedures.
Council Foa, do you want to cancel City Property and Claims, do you mind?
Certainly not, I will cancel City Property and Claims as well this evening.
The Licensing Committee is also canceled this evening.
I'd like to call the Public Works Committee to order at six forty-seven. After any motions, from the docket of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to transfer eight thousand dollars from account one-four-two-zero-one-zero-zero-five-one-one-zero-zero-zero. Public Works Salarian Wages to the following, four thousand dollars to account one-four-two-zero-one-zero-zero-five-two-one-zero-one-zero. Public Works Heating, four thousand dollars to account one-four-two-zero-one-zero-zero-five-two-four-zero-one-three. Public Works Traffic Light Maintenance.
A second.
Thank you. So this is just, Mike's taking this money from salary and wages, he had, they had a traffic light issue at County Square, and this is just overdone heating bills, does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the mayor requests authorization to sign grant applications or filings with Mass DEP. The first grant application through Mass DEP will be for cybersecurity improvements. Therefore, I entertain a motion to authorize filing, one, that Mayor Kathleen D. Simone has hereby authorized on behalf of the applicant to file applications, execute agreements for grant and/or loan assistance, as well as furnishing such information, data and documents pertaining to the applicant for grants and/or loans as may be required, and otherwise to act as the authorized representative of the applicant in connection with this application. Two, the purpose of this, of said loan grants, if awarded, shall be funded, excuse me, shall be fund-approved activities. Three, that if said award is made, the applicant agrees to pay those costs which constitute the required applicant's share of the project cost.
Second.
Thank you, so this is for the Water Department, for a grant for extra cybersecurity, obviously we know how important that is, and it, they require the mayor to be an authorized signer. Does anybody have any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to transfer thirteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars and fifty-one cents from account one-four-two-zero-one-zero-zero-five-one-zero, excuse me, five-one-one-zero-zero-zero Public Works Salarian Wages to account one-four-two-zero-one-zero-zero-five-three-zero-one-zero-one Public Works Professional Services to repair the catch basin cleaning truck.
Second.
Thank you, so this is for the catch basin clean, cleaning truck, and it's been at this vendor for quite some time. Initially, it was around six thousand dollars, but then they came back and said that they couldn't work with the boom, the boom needed to be replaced. This vendor is the only vendor in the Northeast to be able to do this work, so here we are. And so we need to allocate this money so we can get this fixed, because they are behind in cleaning the catch basins. Does anybody have any questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And that's all the business I have for Public Works, I'd like to call for adjournment at six fifty.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you, Public Safety and Emergency Management is canceled this evening, call for committee meeting if that's appropriate.
Personnel Veterans Union Services Committee called to order at six fifty-one. Out of my committee, Council Tavoris, Council Waterman. Alright, from the docket of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to transfer six hundred thirty-five dollars from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account one-five-four-three-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-two-four-two-three-zero. Veterans Maintenance of Vehicles to replace the ramp on the veteran's wheelchair van.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavoris. Basically, there's a, there's a higher cost of this, but Ben Call has transferred monies from accounts, and this is what he has left that he has to transfer over, it's sorely needed, and they pushed us off as long as they could. Any questions?
The only comment I would say is that this is incredibly important.
Yeah.
We have a number of wheelchair veterans that really need this, so we're running down to, every day, we're running to one of the places, one of the hospitals.
It's very important, I completely agree. Alright, any other questions, comments, concerns, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three-zero. From the docket of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, the mayor respectfully submits communication from Director of Veterans Services Ben Call regarding the, I entertain a motion to approve the donation of three hundred dollars to Stop Shop Gift Cars from Gilbert Perry Post, one-one-five Veterans Foreign Office, foreign war, foreign wars to the Veterans Office. Alright, obviously, this is great, and VFW, as they always do, comes through with something to help out everybody. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Looks like a little taping.
Yes, yeah, that was my fault, because I, I had a different, had a different page to run, and I was running, reading off the other one after I was instructed not to, so. I could read it again.
No, no.
Okay, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three-zero. Alright, from the docket of June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to transfer six thousand four hundred and thirty-one dollars and twenty-five cents from account one-one-two-four-one-zero-zero-zero-dash-five-seven-eight-three-zero-zero. Citywide Reserve Fund for Transfer to account one-six-three-zero-one-zero-zero-dash-five-one-five-zero-five-zero-seven-five. Recreation earned time paid due to a pending retirement.
Second.
Thank you, Council Tavoris. Basically, we have, it's just, just, contact rules, pending retirement, and this is the money that needs to be paid out. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
No.
Alright, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three-zero. That's all for Personal Veterans and New Services Committee, and I call for adjournment at six fifty-four. Sir, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes three-zero. And also, we have no business for compensation, cost case, call for meeting at an ex-appropriate time.
I call Zoning and Land Use Committee to order at six fifty-four. Members of the committee are myself, Vice President Dolan, and Councilor Voight, and I have one piece of business. From the docket of June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to accept parcel B containing two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-three square feet of real estate for open space purposes in perpetuity, in place under the stewardship of the Conservation Commission, fulfilling the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions Number zero-nine-seven-dash-one-one-eight-four, dated July thirteenth, two thousand and eleven, as well as Condition fourteen, contained in the Planning Board's Certificate of Vote dated June twenty-third, two thousand and eleven. Specifically, that pursuant to the provisions of seventeen-dash-ten-point-five, open space residential development, Veridian Development LLC shall formally offer parcel B containing two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-three square feet of open space as shown on Sheet Five of sixteen to the Municipal Council as a donation to the Conservation Commission prior to a final release of funds from the Performance Guarantee, or lots from covenant, whichever applies by the Planning Board.
Second.
Thank you. This is an undeveloped parcel of land on Volcom Lane and Dumont Way in Admiral, and it is, conveniences, it's Conservation Commission, it's open space, it's, it goes to them based on the, this, the parcel B, and it's, conveniences subject to a twenty-foot wide water main easement, and open space, space water main and drainage easement, and an open space drain easement, occupying an area of forty thousand one hundred and fifty-three square feet. And that's what their donation is about for this open space. Any other questions on that? Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes three-zero, and that is all the business I have for the Zoning and Land Use Committee, and I move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned at six fifty-seven.
Okay. So I call for the Transportation and Traffic Committee to begin at six fifty-seven. And we have Councilors Dolan and Sawyer with us this evening, we have a full committee. And there are two items that I would like to take, take up tonight. The first one will be the second one listed, from the docket of March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four. Refer the following request to the Traffic Study Commission for study and recommendation to create pedestrian crosswalks at two locations, the intersection of Commerce Way and Tiffany Street, and at approximately fourteen hundred Commerce Way to assist residents of the complex to cross heavily trafficked thoroughfares.
Second.
Thank you. The, and this was presented to us through Councilor Foah some time ago, back in March maybe, and it, so they've been talking about it at every meeting since March. And the decision was made, and I agreed with it, at the last week's Traffic Study Commission to strike this motion. And the reasons were several. There was really no desire on the part of the Traffic Study Commission to build a crosswalk at that site at fourteen hundred, that's one of the locations. Partly because there's no sidewalk on the side that they would be building it across to. There is a sidewalk on the other side, not at the side where fourteen hundred is. And to our knowledge, there is very little pedestrian traffic that would want to take that sidewalk, although one can't be quite sure. There is a well-worn path that goes down on the side where fourteen hundred is, down to the corner of Tiffany and Commerce, where they could cross over at that, at that side. The, the expense of building a sidewalk was part of the concern, but I don't think it was the only concern. And I didn't, and I wanted to be fair to Councilor Foah and invite you to make any comments as well, if you so desire. Are there any concerns, questions, thoughts, please, Councilor Dolan?
So are you moving to strike this, or?
Yes.
Okay, so you'll have to-
There's a second half to it too, but that's the first half.
Was she, well Lori, I mean, Councilor Sawyer already seconded, so you didn't say move to strike, so do you, do you want to do that?
Yes, I want to be, move to strike the entire, the entire motion from the docket of March fifth. But I want to talk about the other side, the other part of it too, as well.
Are you striking both, are you striking both?
Right, it is one motion with two, two items within it.
Alright, so if you want to say, if you want to stop the motion, that you want to move to strike it, that's what you should do.
So, I want to move to strike the, shall I repeat the motion?
Yeah, Lori, just, I'm sorry, if you could just take back your second.
Okay, take back my second.
And then if you want to read it to move to strike.
So I would move to strike the following request to the Traffic Study Commission for study and recommendation to create pedestrian crosswalks at two locations, the intersection of Commerce Way and Tiffany Street, and at fourteen hundred Commerce Way to assist residents of the complex to cross heavily trafficked thoroughfares.
Sorry, second again, okay.
Thank you. Let me talk about the other reason. The Tiffany Street intersection does have a crosswalk at, at this time. It will be painted, that much will be done. There is a request that the Traffic Study Commission is going to put in, or may already have done so, to ask the Parks Department to cut back the tree that partially blocks that crosswalk, the side of it as you come down Commerce. It is not used very often, it, it, it will stay there, there's, there's no desire to change that on the part of the Traffic Study Commission. The, it was also noted that there is another crosswalk which has a much better sight lines as you walk or, or ride a bike, or however you get there, as you go up Tiffany Street towards the Route ninety-five overpass. There's, there is a crosswalk up there with plenty of sight room. So, any questions?
I think my only comment is that there has been only one complaint about this that I have received. I'm not enthused about the fact that we are encouraging pedestrians to, to walk on a unpaved path, but it is one that they have been using, and in light of the expense of the sidewalk and the paucity of objections to the current situation, I have no further comment on this particular request of my constituent.
Thank you, any other questions, Councilor Dolan first?
So, I understand, you know, that to, for people to be disappointed or whatever, but we have to be careful where we put crosswalks as well, if anybody that was on the council back when Councilor Perica didn't want a crosswalk at La Salette, and she got a lot of flack for it, but crosswalks can give people a false sense of security, and if you put it on a high-traffic, high-speed, busy street with corners, or whatever the case may be, it, it can be more dangerous than not, because again, people feel safer in a crosswalk, which they should, but depending on the location, the area, I can understand why they were against this one.
I think Councilor Sawyer was next. Thank you.
I wanted to just ask about the Tiffany Street crosswalk that you said, is already there, is it further up the street that they would have to walk up to in order to get to it to cross over there? Is it further up the street that they would have to walk up to in order to get to it to cross over there? And is this intersection like on a curve? Is it like?
It is. The intersection from Commerce is, I guess you would call it a curve, is it curves around into Tiffany Street. And traffic can go fairly fast down that hill. They, they didn't want to remove the crosswalk, the Traffic Study Commission, but they didn't want to promote it either.
Up the street out of Tiffany?
Correct.
And to Acting President Dolan's point, and I have also spoken to Michael Tyler and Bobby Rugio, and they basically reiterate exactly what you were saying. And when you've got curves like that and in certain spots, you're right, it's a safety thing, and you're right, you get this false sense of security. So it, it makes a lot of sense. And these guys, they know what they're talking about, and they'll always advise what's good and what's not, so.
Counselor Holmes.
Thank you. We've been talking about this a lot. Counselor Bennett left with the piece of business that has to do with overlooking the whole city, looking at all the crosswalks, trying to figure out, doing a full assessment of what needs to happen. And I reached out to the administration a few weeks ago and was pretty disappointed with my call with her response to this. Her response, I asked if we had any number of how many crosswalks were in the city. We, we really need to get like a full assessment. I reminded her of this business, she was on the council when this business was introduced. She told me that I should go out and count and figure out where the crosswalks were. So I asked her if she would please just ask the question to DPW if there's ever been, if we, if we have that information. Since then, it's gotten a little bit further where I believe Counselor Dolan was in touch with Mr. Tyler, and he mentioned doing a comprehensive study. We've done this before with, what was it, street signs?
Street signs, yeah.
Street signs. So we figured out kind of all the street signs in the whole city. It's a process where you bring in a company to do this, and I really think it's time to look at all the business in your committee has to do with crosswalks. We have a problem here, right? We don't want to repaint them because there's not a crosswalk on the other side, so we don't repaint them. But then people feel safe, but they really shouldn't, and we're not gonna repaint them because they're not in compliance. I've been hearing that excuse for eight years. We need to do something. So I think it's time to take some action. It, it's okay if we don't have the finances to, or it's gonna take five to ten years to get this going, but I, I hope that we can address it in a formal way. So that concludes my comments, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor LaVoy, yes.
Thank you. I agree, I think it's pretty disheartening to hear that. I know we have the wheelchair event downtown that's put on solely to understand the challenges we face on the sidewalks, and we just are now as a city overlooking the challenges with crosswalks. Not being ADA compliant is one of the main concerns, or not being painted up to par for just safety and visibility standards. So I, I think that's pretty disheartening to hear. I, I would like to see if not to fund a study, even if we, the See Click Fix website, if we do a specific link solely for crosswalk complaints. I'm sure most people throughout their travels in the city probably have a few that they are, you know, upset with the condition of them, and it might be a good start to that. But I tend to agree, I think it's a, a problem that's gonna grow year after year until at some point it's put in check. And then regarding this crosswalk, I was hesitant to wanna see one here, that's a pretty big truck route. We, we did a big effort to make Morse put a road directly onto County to then go onto Commerce solely to stay away from Tiffany, to encourage him to turn at that intersection, which is obviously dump trucks, cement trucks, you name it. So I think it's touching the Counselor Dolan's standpoint of false insecurity. Putting people on that corner with trucks trying to turn is a bit dangerous. So I think I trust Superintendent Tyler with it being how it is now, and I would agree with the movement to strike. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Foa.
I just would like to add a comment to Counselor Holmes's remarks. There are crosswalks that seem to me outdated. There are crosswalks where there used to be a school but is not one any longer, and so it's confusing. And those, I don't know how to eliminate those, but those don't need to be reinforced, they need to be eliminated. And I've noticed that on County Road, for example. So, yeah, a comprehensive analysis might give us a better understanding of where to put our money and how to deal with areas which are busy, but according to the Traffic Study Committee and DPW don't really justify putting signage there or crosswalk there. There is a large development there, there are a lot of people there, but I, I agree that their judgment is reasonable, and I have no reason to question it, so.
Are there any other questions, concerns? I'd like to call for a vote, all those in favor of striking?
Aye.
Aye.
And I say aye. Vote is three to nothing to strike that particular motion. I would like to move on also from the docket of April second, two thousand and twenty-four, a motion which came in through Counselor Holmes, to install an RRFP, paint the crosswalk, and complete the sidewalk to meet ADA compliance at South Main Street and Sienna Road, or to suggest the closest possible area to place a crosswalk for safety.
Second.
Thank you. Just to educate anybody who might be watching as well, an RRFP are these flashing signs that you see at certain places throughout the city when you press buttons, okay? South Main Street and Sienna Road is just south of the Elks Club, where there is a slight turn to the left and also a slight hill down. And there is a crosswalk that you can't see until you take that turn and start to go down that little hill. And it comes upon you rather quickly. And there are a number of schoolchildren that cross that crosswalk, as well as, I'm sure, adults. And so I would like to give Counselor Holmes a chance to speak to us about your concern on this area, and then I'll say some more.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. So again, it's all the business that's in Traffic and Transportation Committee right now has to do with pedestrian safety. And I was just thinking, on South Main Street, there's actually a crosswalk that is just two white lines. It's almost like in the mid-nineties, somebody just got paint and just went around the city, and just whoever was asking for it, we just did it. And I agree, some of them need to be eliminated, and if that's not safe, the individuals in that area still would like to cross, so we need to figure out where it could be placed in a safe way, and then eliminate the ones that are a safety concern. That concludes it, thank you.
Counselor Cobus.
I believe when we were on our tour, Mike Tyler said in the mid-nineties, essentially, that's what was happening. And then until they put a stop to it, because some of these crosswalks that were painted earlier on were, were not in appropriate places. It was sort of, a city councilor would say, hey, can we get a crosswalk painted here? And they would, DPW would go out and just paint it. So you're not far from recognizing what was happening a, a long time ago.
Before I ask anybody else to speak, I'd wanna add one thing. So the Traffic Study Commission has been discussing this for three months, and they decided unanimously to go ahead and approve this motion. And, but with, 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 they're thinking a little bit differently. They, the thinking has evolved to the point of not using this crosswalk anymore, but establishing a new crosswalk slightly south of it, halfway between the next, the next school crossing to pick up children. So, and also to build a sidewalk on the Sienna Street side to the point of that new crosswalk. So there has been, they realize this will cost some money, but they feel that this is important for the safety of the children there. Yes, Counselor Dolan.
So they, they moved the location, then? They, they want this somewhere else?
Yes.
Okay. So I'm wondering if maybe you should hold on to this till you get the exact location for the proper language to vote it out? Like, because nothing in here is suggesting of a sidewalk that you said at Sienna, so I'm wondering if maybe you should get the exact location, language, and vote it out that way?
Yes, I'd be, I'd be glad to hold it, but I also, I'm, I'm mentioning this because the language that Counselor Holmes wrote was to suggest the closest possible area to place a crosswalk. So that, that has been discussed.
Right, which is great, and I'm just wondering if we're gonna pass something that we know the location and.
So maybe we should pass it a little more specifically?
I think so.
And reword.
Right, because, I mean, and if you're talking about building any new sidewalk as well, and if you're putting an RRFB up, then, you know, all that should be in there, and the location and the sidewalk, and so that, you know what I mean? I think.
I do know what you mean, and, and I might add, and an approximate cost at that point, too, perhaps.
Yeah.
Because we don't know the, the cost yet.
Right, that would, that would have to be discussed with Mike Tyler, I assume, to get a cost on that, because we need to see how much sidewalk. So I just think it could be more detailed, it should be passed more detailed than it is right here.
Correct.
So.
I appreciate that.
That's just my suggestion.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor LaVoy.
Thank you. I, I'm happy to support whichever you decide to move forward with. I think there's enough language to take it out tonight, but if you agree with Counselor Dolan, I would be right in support with you. I know this is over two months old now, and I spoke when it first came out and then went back into committee, but this is definitely needed, and I know exactly where this is, and like I mentioned then, when I first knew there was an issue is when School Committee Member Scott Dimonichy was running across the street because cars weren't stopping. That's a, I would argue that South Main Street is one of the fastest-traveled roads in Attleboro, aside from maybe South Ave and Tiffany Street, but it's right up there with the racetrack streets, I would say. So I definitely see a big need, and I, I know where they're talking about moving this. It's about if you moved it from the backyard of a home to the front yard of a home, maybe a probably thirty-foot difference, so I don't think it's a marginal move, but either way, support it, whichever you decide, and can't wait to have this in regardless.
So I will be going back to Mike Tyler, discussing this through him to begin with. The Traffic Study Commission is fine about this proposal in general, and so now we'll get specific, I hope, and bring it back as soon as possible. Any other questions before I call for a motion to adjourn?
So are we gonna, are you holding it or voting it out?
I'm holding it now.
So if, did I second it? I'll withdraw my second.
So I will ask for adjournment at seven seventeen. All those in favor?
Second, aye.
You, aye, we are adjourned at seven seventeen.
I call ordinances, elections, and legislative matters to order at seven seventeen. Councillors on my committee include Counselor Holmes and Counselor Cobus. From the docket of November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, I entertain a motion to call for a public hearing on August twenty, two thousand and twenty-four to amend section twelve point three point three P of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro as follows. Engage in disorderly conduct pursuant to Massachusetts General Law's Chapter two seventy-two, Section fifty-three, as construed by the courts.
Second.
Thank you. So for, for this, this motion, there was a slight administrative glitch, so just wanted to make sure we properly had the, the time to advertise for this hearing. And in addition to that, I, I failed to, to bring this out in the last committee meeting, so hopefully we can, we can get it right this time, so. Any questions? All right, all those. Counselor Foa.
My question is simply whether, since disorderly conduct in public places is always violates the law.
We're not considering the merits of this, this is solely, solely a call for the public hearing.
Fine.
Counselor LaVoy.
I just wanna thank you for your time on this and for taking everyone's opinion into consideration. I remember when you asked how we wanted to proceed, and so I just appreciate you calling for the public hearing. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of October seventeen, two thousand and twenty-three, I entertain a motion to strike the following to look at changes at seven dash eight point two of the city ordinance, requesting a review and overhaul of the abatement process for non-municipal users of the city's rubbish recycle program.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. So for this item of business, so Counselor Reynolds and I, several weeks ago, met with the city auditor and the solid waste manager to discuss the way the trash program works now, as well as the abatement process, the, the nature of the proposed motion originally was, was to really address the abatement process. But I think that meeting gave us a lot of insight into why the ordinance is written the way it is, and I think it would, it would not be wise for us to amend it the way that I think Counselor Reynolds envisioned it originally. So because of that, I think we're pulling it at this point, not to say that there aren't changes that, that can't be made down the road, but at this point, it's not feasible to, to move forward with the, the proposed amendments. Any questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of June fourth, two thousand and twenty-four, I entertain a motion to approve the amendment to section one dash eight point one of the revised ordinances of the City of Attleboro, which contains outdated pricing and information. The proposed amendment is as follows. Delete in its entirety one dash eight point one list of persons book. The list of persons book prepared by the Board of Election Commissioners shall be furnished free of charge as provided by law to all political committees and all political candidates of the various districts in which the city is located. There shall be a twenty-dollar charge for all printed copies and a ten-dollar charge for all other copies supplied on a computer disk, replaced with one dash eight point one list of persons book. The list of persons book prepared by the Board of Election Commissioners shall be furnished free of charge as provided by law to all political committees and to all political candidates of the various districts in which the city is located. There shall be a thirty-dollar charge for all printed copies and a four-dollar charge for all other copies supplied on a thumb drive.
Second.
So this piece of business came down from the administration. I spoke to the election office manager, Sharon, last week. I could gather from intuition, I think, what, what they were looking to do here, I think it's pretty straightforward, but obviously, the main changes that we see here is the, the charge for printed copies going up from twenty to thirty dollars, and the, the, the second charge on a thumb drive to, to four dollars, obviously, that changes the, the method on which that information is provided from a computer disk to a thumb drive, I think, for pretty obvious reasons. So Sharon's rationale behind this is essentially just, just to cover our costs as, as a city. So the last time this, this ordinance was amended was back in nineteen ninety-nine, and I think we all know what's happened with inflation between nineteen ninety, I should say, probably in the last two years, never mind since nineteen ninety-nine. So really, all this is doing is making sure that we can cover the costs for, I mean, it's, it's not a huge expense, but we don't wanna be losing money in, in these areas either. I mean, there are a few dollars here and there, but I think it's, it's, it's good practice to make sure we're at least covering the cost. The goal is not to make money off of this, it's to simply cover the city's costs, and the city uses a third-party supplier to, to do the printing. Counselor Foa.
I, I believe that thumb drive is a colloquialism, and that we should add to this at least, or a USB flash drive, which is, I believe, what they are, these devices are actually called.
Yeah, I would be agnostic on that point. I think I, I would be in support of such a change. Suggest that maybe we do that on the, on the floor of the full council. I think it's a simple amendment at that point, and like I said, I, I don't have any, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be against it, so. Makes sense to me. Counselor Holmes?
Well, she's the IT and Infrastructure Chair, so she knows.
Any other comments? Okay, hearing done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. From the docket of April sixteen, twenty twenty-four, I entertain a motion to approve the attached resolution to amend the city charter to provide for the appointment, the positions of city treasurer and city collector as opposed to elected, and to petition the Massachusetts Legislature to enact the same.
Second.
Thank you. So the reason I'm, um, bringing this out tonight is, is really not necessarily for us to vote on it, but for us to start a conversation. So, um, I think there are probably a lot of questions, um, based on the public hearing throughout the city about what we do, um, regarding the treasurer and, uh, collector positions, um, moving forward. And, um, first of all, I want to thank the administration for bringing this business down. Um, I think our treasurer and collector positions, as, uh, the mayor eloquently said at the, at the public hearing, these, these are vital roles for the day-to-day operations of the city, and I don't think anybody can, can argue that. Um, so I think the proposal from the administration is one that we should carefully and, and thoughtfully deliberate, um, as a body here. Um, I understand the, the concerns of the mayor presented at the public hearing and, and agree that there, there's always going to be a risk of, of malfeasance by elected officials. Um, and I think the same is true of, uh, appointed officials as well, but, um, you know, perhaps there are other ways that we can mitigate that by switching over to an appointed model. Um, but I also think we, we need to look at this issue from a zoomed-out perspective, and what I mean is, I think we've got to realize that, um, these are positions that have been elected for a long time. Um, and the city has functioned in this form of government for many decades, so I think we've got to think about the, the long-term effects of making such structural changes right now. Um, and, and that's not an opinion, it's just a fact, um, of, of, uh, that I think we, we need to consider as a body. Um, so that being said, there's certainly merit to the approach of, of, uh, of making these two positions appointed, um, but I do think we should tread very carefully. Um, I think removing the power, uh, of the voters to elect these positions, um, although not legally required, I think should be done with some buy-in from the voters. Um, otherwise, in, in my opinion, I think it's, it's a right that we're taking away rather than a right that the voters are giving up. And I think there's a, there's a distinction there. Um, also, regardless of the, uh, the merits, I think from a policy standpoint, because I think you can make good arguments either way, um, it's, it's also important that as a body that we understand the process of petitioning the legislature to, to amend the charter and to actually get this done, um, in the way that the mayor was proposing. And I spoke to the city solicitor last week about this, and while ultimately, as the mayor stated, the timeline of passing a home rule petition, um, will be dictated by the legislature, um, I think it's, it's also, um, important to note that it would not be outside of the realm of possibility for the legislature to require some sort of voter approval as a condition of approving the petition. This is something that Solicitor Peter Mello mentioned. Um, he's discussing this with, with some of his colleagues who have dealt with these, uh, same sort of home rule petitions in the past. Um, and so he'll offer some feedback there. I think it might be important, um, once, once I get some feedback there to share that with the council, um, just so we know what we're getting into if, if it is a route that we go down, because I think that's important to know on the front end. Um, and the last point that I want to make is that this piece of business, I think, brings up a, a really good opportunity for us to discuss the merits of perhaps exploring, uh, a charter commission, uh, to address not just this issue, but other charter-related business, which obviously is a much heavier lift and, uh, will require a lot more time and, um, and, and input, I think, from, uh, from us, um, as a body, as well as sort of in general, the city, so. Um, so I do understand that, but I, I also wanted to, to bring that, up that point as well, so. That being said, any, any questions, comments? Consular LaVoy?
Thank you. I would echo a lot of what you said. I think you're pretty on par with those arguments for both sides of this. Um, my big thing is taking away something from the voters. The voters have done, I would argue, a fine job at selecting those roles for many years. I've, to my knowledge, I've never known of anyone that wasn't fit for those positions. Um, but I, I also can see that voter turnout is a struggle year over year. Uh, the election office talks about it all the time, and I think the more we take away, the lower that number is gonna go. And, you know, I just don't see that eleven people should be the ones deterring voters and, and taking away from voters. I think it's, it's a voter decision, um, and if the voters want those positions to be appointed, then by all means, but I don't think that, uh, this body should be the one determining. Matt?
Uh, Consular Sawyer, then, Consular Angelo.
Uh, as you mentioned, um, this is a vital role, both of them are vital roles, but they also, I believe, need the best experience. You know, have experienced people in those roles, and, um, so I would agree with them being appointed, because then they can be, they can find the best experienced, best people who know how to do these and not, um, you know, cost the city money in those cases.
Thanks for that comment, and if I could just jump in in between, um, that's a good point, and, and to that point, um, for other appointed positions of that caliber in the city, the, the ordinances spell out qualifications for those roles. So I think if that is a route that we go down, we probably might want to look at creating some sort of qualifications if those are appointed positions, so that we're mirroring the system we, we sort of use now in terms of, uh, appointing other similarly situated positions, so to speak, so that's a good point. Consular Angelo?
Uh, just wanted to say, and maybe directed, uh, to you, uh, active President Dolan, do we want to have this discussion if we're still waiting for more information?
It's this committee. It's-
Uh, so, oh, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I mean, it's Council Tavora's committee, and, and I don't think you intend on voting it, you said, right? So I think you wanted to start the discussion, and I think it's good that if you continue the discussions, since, uh, Council Reynolds and President Delicio are, are out, and so I'm sure that they, they might have something they want to add, so, um, you know, i- i- if you're not taking it out, it's your committee.
Yeah, and, um, that, that was exactly my intent, was to start the discussion. Because of the time-sensitive nature of, I think, the way this was proposed to us, I didn't think it made sense to continue to wait to have this conversation, to at least start it. Um, so I feel like now's a good time to at least start that, because there, I think there's a lot of moving pieces involved here, and so I think it's gonna be more than one discussion before we, we probably take a vote and actually land on some sort of position as a body, so. That's, that's my thought process, at least at this point, so. Consular Holmes?
Thank you. At this point, I wouldn't be able to support the way this came out. I do think that it should be, um, something that's voted on. I know that it was mentioned, some of the information that I would want is, um, I know that other municipalities have it so that they are appointed positions, but I don't know if anybody, if we have information about who made that shift from elected to, and how that process went, because to your point, it's been such a long time that we have functioned this way, um, so it would be a big change. Now, um, a charter commission would, I think that that does take so many signature, it's a big process. Um, do you know if it's as big of a process, if it's a specific question on a ballot? I, I'm not familiar with that.
My understanding is a charter commission is more holistic regarding the charter, and I don't think would be centered around one particular amendment, so. Um, so yeah, I, I think that would have to, I think there needs to be at least fifteen percent, um, of the voters that need to vote to actually create the commission, then you've got to have an election to, to, uh, to, to, to elect the members of that commission, so it's, it's a, it's a very long process, from my understanding, so.
Sorry, just, do you know about if there could be, would the process is to get a specific question on the ballot, though? None?
That I do not know.
Okay.
That I do not know. I didn't talk to the solicitor about that. Consular Waterman, then. Consular Angelo.
I really appreciate you bringing this up, and, and in the format that you're doing it, so that we have a, we have a discussion and we hear each other's thoughts, and we evolve as we go. Um, I am not comfortable with this body making the decision to go to, for example, to the state legislature. I feel that it belongs to the people of Attleboro, and the only way that the people of Attleboro can make, well, there may be various ways, but one way is definitely a charter commission. If, if it has to go that route, it has to go that route. Um, and if the people of Attleboro choose to change the way that they, uh, tune, change it to an appointment, so be it. But it's, it's the people of Attleboro that need to make that decision.
So, um, a few things. Um, even way before I was on the council, um, I always thought that those positions should not be elected, should be the, the amounts in, uh, in the expertise that is, uh, involved in this, and, um, and I just didn't really feel that always rolling the dice every two years for something that could be a popularity contest possibly. So that, that's what always concerned me. Um, uh, I'm always, um, up for, is there, if there's a compromise, if there's some other good ways to sway me the other way, I'm willing, but one thing that does concern me, and I might not have all the information, as I think you're gonna be getting some information, is, is, um, you could literally be having, uh, this vote on the ballot, but then you have people running for this, and why are these people gonna want, want to run for this if they could spend all this money, put up a campaign, and then all of a sudden get voted, and then this, uh, the citizens decide, okay, we want to have this as an appointed position versus elected position, and someone spent all this money, and then immediately, uh, it, it's all gone to waste. So that's the kind of thing that concerns me. And then if we do it where, okay, we're gonna have a special election, now we're spending, I don't know, another thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars for this special election that this city does not have and can't really afford, because we have so many other things that need to be done too. So we got a lot of moving parts here, and we really got to carefully think about this, and, um, uh, because there's so many things that happen. That's about what all I had to say.
If I could just respond to that, um, it, it's a good point. I think it's a, a short-term sort of tactical issue to think through, and I think in, um, in defense of the mayor, I think she's accounted for that, so I, I do recall in her, uh, um, during the public hearing, that one of the sort of last-minute changes that she made to the petition was to allow whoever was in office at that time to finish out their term, um, based on when we make these changes, because I think that's a legitimate concern. Um, so I, I, yeah, it, it's definitely something I think we have to, uh, account for in the, in the short term, so I agree. Consular LaVoy?
So I was gonna respond the same way as, you know, the mayor touched on that, and making sure that those who are elected will finish that term out. And I, and I think it's safe to say that the current two in that position and, and tend to be there at least for a good chunk of time, and I would think that if it was a voted-on thing, that they would be the ones running as well, and regardless of the outcome, would likely be appointed in that role. So I, I, again, I still stand firm on letting the voters decide, but I know there's a lot of time for this to go down the road, and it'll probably come back down here a couple times, so, thank you.
Any further comments? So the la, oh, okay, Consular Koppus?
And I'll just echo a little bit of what Consular Angelo said, in that my belief is that there's so much expert, expertise that's required for these positions, and my belief is that right now that these positions should be appointed. Um, the aspect that I'm not convinced on is the avenue to get from where we are now to that point, and I, and I'm open to discussions, but my general belief is that those two positions should be, should be appointed. And I'm open to discussions on, on how we get there and, and discussions that way, but I, I, I very much believe that the expertise required is such that they, they, they should be appointed.
Uh, Consular Holmes and-
Thank you. I, I think that the way that you just worded that is wonderful, but it, the issue is, is that we have a history here. We have a history of them being elected, and so now, to your point, what, what is the process to, to get there, basically?
And, um, uh, and getting back to one other comment, you said that, uh, the mayor said that they could finish out the term. Uh, this is just my opinion. There is no way that I'm gonna quit my job and run for election, spend all the time, run for election, and then know possibly that I might be out of a job in another two years. Um, so even that right there kinda is almost kinda like making my point. Uh, I mean, I could be, you know, biased or whatever, but that would even deter me, and maybe deter other, other candidates. Um, and maybe, maybe I'm missing something. I might be missing something, but like I said, I'm willing to listen to all the arguments and then make a decision from that.
Yeah, the last thing I wanted to, uh, reiterate is, even if we do go down this road and, and petition the legislature with this, um, amendment to the, um, uh, to the charter through this home rule petition, there's still a chance that the legislature may require some sort of voter approval anyway. Even if that's the part that we're trying to get around, let's be honest, right? I mean, and it's, and it's not something I agree with as a matter of process, ta- taking out the merits of, of either side of the argument, because, because again, I think there's merit on, on both sides, but just, just making sure that we're aware of what the potential, um, the, the way that the legislature might handle this, it's, it's not outside of the realm of possibility. So the House has got to vote on it, the Senate's got to, got to vote on it. The Senate has a pretty robust, um, Senate council, so this is, this is something that they'll probably look at pretty, pretty closely, and even from speaking with Peter, this is, this is a trend, I think, of, 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 I don't know if necessarily cities, towns, or just a combination of them, switching some of these positions that were historically elected to, um, appointed positions. And so, um, again, that's, that's something to think about too, is that this might not be as simple as, you know, we submit this petition to the legislature in four to six months, they rubber stamp it, and hey, you're underway. So that's just something to consider, but again, with the limited information we have now, I think this is sort of what we're working off of, but hoping to continue the discussion. Consular Koppus?
But that, that might be i- i- inappropriate path for us, for us to discuss how we, what we believe is appropriate, and then throw it over the fence to the state legislature for their legal department to review it, and then potentially send it to the voters, and, and, and that's okay. I, I mean, if that's the, the decision, and we have to wait for it to go through that process, and it takes longer, that's, so be it. Uh, like maybe, but, uh, like, I don't think any of us are in a rush.
Consular Paul?
I really would like to see what other cities have done, what their experience is within their councils or meetings, and what the legislature has done with respect to such requests, so, uh, I would like to see that history before we make any, have further discussions and make further decisions. That's important.
And, and I agree, and I'm, I'm hoping, um, Solicitor Mello will be able to cobble some of those anecdotal pieces for us based on, um, some of his contacts that, uh, that he has, that we, um, we discussed to have represented cities and towns in doing this very thing, so, I think it'll be very helpful. Any further comments? Okay, um, seeing none, would you, uh-
I reserve a second.
Thank you. All right, um, so that concludes the business for, uh, for the committee. I move to adjourn at seven forty-two.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned at seven thirty. And the Special Committee on Tax Abeyment is canceled.
Everybody good? I think it's called the special meeting of the municipal council to order. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clark, can you please read the special meeting notice?
Certainly. June fourth, twenty twenty-four, to members of the municipal council, from James Delicio, council president, councilors, by authority of Article Two, Section two dash seven C of the Attleboro Home Rule Charter, I hereby call a special meeting of the municipal council as follows. Date is Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Time is six forty-five PM, seventy-seven Park Street, City Council Chamber. Committee and special meeting to address fiscal year twenty twenty-four end-of-year votes needed by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Sincerely, James J. Delicio, council president.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. So we're suspending the rules tonight for the special meeting. Um, there is no mayor's communication, there will be no committee of the whole, there is no new business, no old business. Um, we do have a clerk's communication. If Madam Clark, you could read that?
Certainly. Certainly. We have received the certificate of vote from the planning board, meeting on Monday, June 17, 2024, where they voted unanimously in the affirmative to recommend to the municipal council that the loan order in the amount of $500,000 for the permitting, bidding, subconsultant, engineering, and testing associated with the pilot study project at the water street, excuse me, water treatment street, treatment plant is consistent with Section 6J Municipal Facilities Goal 16, Policy 2 of the City's Comprehensive Plan.
So that's an FYI to all councilors.
Thank you. We have received a notice of scrivener's error on the certificate of vote taken on June 18, 2024, at the municipal council meeting. Vote number two had a scrivener's error regarding language specifically in account number, account number 11241000-599600 should have read 11241000-599200.
And that's an FYI. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
So as I stated, we'll just be recognizing the councilors that have business. We have nine motions this evening, so we'll be recognizing Councilors Cobus, Angelo, and Tavares. So as usual, we will start with Counselor Cobus.
Thank you. Reporting for the Finance Committee, from the docket of June 25, 2024, I understand a motion to transfer $20,000 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account mayor, city solicitor. The city solicitor's June invoice has not been received. Therefore, in an abundance of caution, additional funds are being requested for the remainder of fiscal year '24.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Do you have any comments, Counselor Ford?
This is just to cover the June invoice for when it comes in.
Thank you. Do any other councilors have any questions or comments? So this will be a roll call vote, starting with Counselor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. From the committee, from the docket of June 4, 2024, I understand a motion to transfer $475 from account assessor staff development to account assessor subscriptions.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Do you have any comments, Counselor Cobus?
It's a subscription.
Do any other councilors have any comments or questions? Motion's in order. Council vote will start with Counselor Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
That concludes the business for the Finance Committee. I call for a committee meeting at the next appropriate time.
Thank you. Counselor Angelo?
Reporting for Public Works Committee, from the docket of June 25, 2024, I move to transfer $8,000 from account Public Works salary and wages to the following, $4,000 Public Works heating, $4,000 Public Works traffic light maintenance.
Second.
Thank you. Do you have any comments, Counsel Angelo?
No, it's just, we just discussed it in committee.
Thank you. This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counselor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
From the docket of June 25, 2024, the mayor requests authorization assigned grant applications or filings with Mass. EP. The first grant application through Mass. EP will be for cybersecurity improvements.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, sorry, we discussed it in committee.
Do any other councilors have any questions? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counselor Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
So for Public Works Committee, I call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
No, you have, you should have three.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. I'll take that back. From the docket of June 25, 2024, I move to transfer $13,750, $750.51 from account Public Works salary and wages to account Public Works professional services to repair the cash basin and cleaning truck.
Second.
Do you have any comments, Counsel Angelo?
We discussed it in committee.
Thank you. This will be, do any other councilors have any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counselor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
And now, that's all there is for Public Works Committee. Call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
And you ready for your personnel?
I am. Reporting for Personnel Veterans' Numerals Service Committee, from the docket of June 25, 2024, I move to transfer $635 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account Veterans Maintenance of Vehicles to replace the ramp on the Veterans wheelchair van, needed by June 30, 2024.
Second.
Thank you. Motion's in order. Do you have any comments?
No, we discussed it in committee.
Do any other councilors have comments or questions? Counsel Lavoie?
Thank you. I just wanted to get this out real quick. When the ARPA fund spending came out, I wanted to look into ways to replace this van, but I just wanted to reiterate what I got from Mason. Currently, the city is between keeping it privatized in terms of funded through donations, which it has been in the past, but the program's been growing, so they're on the fence of is this going to be brought onto a city program, or is this going to stay donation-funded to the department? So, you know, weighing that, I just want to keep that in mind in terms of something to think about, as we heard Ben mention, this van is getting towards a point on life, and we're spending more and more on it.
Thank you, Counsel Lavoie. Counsel Angelo?
I have an answer to that. Basically, this will not be taken on by the city taxpayers. It's already been decided by the administration, and they are looking into for the future, for working on donations now and going to be working on that. So this will be strictly still donations.
Anybody else have any questions? So this will be a roll call vote, starting with Counselor Tavares.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
So for Public Works Committee, I call for a meeting at the next appropriate time.
No, you have, you should have three.
Oh, I'm sorry. My mistake. I'll take that back. From the docket of June 25, 2024, I move to transfer $13,750, $750.51 from account Public Works salary and wages to account Public Works professional services to repair the cash basin and cleaning truck.
Second.
Do you have any comments, Counsel Angelo?
We discussed it in committee.
Thank you. This will be, do any other councilors have any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counselor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
From the docket of June 25, 2024, I move to approve the donation of $300 of stop-and-stop gift cards from the Gilbertbury Post Number 115 Veterans of Foreign Wars to the Veterans Office.
Second.
We discussed this in committee.
Thank you. This will be a voice vote. Does anybody have any questions before we take a vote? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
From the docket of June 25, 2024, I move to transfer $6,431.25 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account recreation earned time paid due to a pending retirement payout.
Second.
Motion's in order. Do you have any comments, Counsel Angelo?
We discussed it in committee.
Thank you. Do any other councilors have any questions? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counselor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
From the docket of June 25, 2024, I move to approve the donation of $300 of stop-and-stop gift cards from the Gilbertbury Post Number 115 Veterans of Foreign Wars to the Veterans Office.
Second.
We discussed this in committee.
Thank you. This will be a voice vote. Does anybody have any questions before we take a vote? This will be a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
From the docket of June 25, 2024, I move to transfer $6,431.25 from account citywide reserve fund for transfer to account recreation earned time paid due to a pending retirement payout.
Second.
Motion's in order. Do you have any comments, Counsel Angelo?
We discussed it in committee.
Thank you. Do any other councilors have any questions or comments? This will be a roll call vote, starting with Counselor Cobus.
Mr. Cobus?
Yes.
Ms. Foer?
Yes.
Mr. Lavoie?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Angelo?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Mr. Waterman?
Yes.
Mr. Tavares?
Yes.
Acting President Dolan?
Yes.
Nine yeas, zero nays.[1486.28]